Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the work session meeting for the Upper Borough Council, July 1st, 2025. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, Phyllis, can you?
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Paris?
Here.
Councilmember Orme? Absent. Councilmember Leonardi?
Here.
Councilmember Arno?
Here.
Vice President Pagnata?
Here.
And President of Council, Rod?
Here.
And I think we should, we can, for our secretary, for Bianca, we can put Deb in as excuse. She was an unknown with family matters. So she may join us late. Okay. Okay. Okay, this evening, we have a registered speaker, and Phyllis is going to introduce him and give us a little background. Good evening, everyone. We have Nick Stallman from the Audubon Society here tonight. He is going to talk to us about Oakmont becoming a bird town. And he has a lot of information that would be helpful. We've gotten a lot of residents calling in, asking if we can participate in a program such as this. So with this burger, do Nick? Welcome.
Thank you all so much for having me. So yeah, my name is Nick Stallman. I'm here with Audubon Society of Western Pennsylvania. Where our mission statement is to connect people to birds of nature, and that's through our programming, our places, which includes Beechwood Farms, Nature Reserve, and Fox Chapel as our headquarters. But we also have a few other locations, especially in Butler County, Buffalo Creek Nature Park, and one just south of Butler, Suckup Nature Park. And we also try to do that through all of our projects. And one of our projects that I started working for Audubon Society for was our Backyard Habitat Program. And this is a way where people can actually enroll and have one of our members, me, come out to their yard, and whether it's a back, a true backyard, or they got a front yard, or they got a back forty acres of forest, or they just have a few container planners. We talk about what they can do to basically make it bird-friendly, pollinator-friendly, talk through some property goals. My background's actually in wildlife habitat management. So we just talk about what you can do to better that. And from our desire to do this in people's own backyards, on private property, Audubon decided to kind of partner with the existing Bird Town program. Bird Town PA changed hands quite a few times. So it started in 2010, and this is through the state Audubon chapter, and they decided around 2020 that they were going to kind of move past the program. But there is a lot of interest in keeping it going. So it became its own little thing under something called the Pennsylvania Audubon Council in 2021. And it was centered mostly in eastern Pennsylvania, so primarily Philadelphia and the surrounding areas where this effort was from, because it's a very small group of people that were keeping this going. And Heidi Shiber, who is the president of Bird Town PA, reached out to us. Could we be the center place for Southwest PA to expand Bird Town up here? And we said yes. It kind of aligns with our goals that we're doing, the Backyard Habitat Program, but at a municipal level. So with Bird Town, what we try to do is show how to make a bird-friendly community throughout the entire municipality. And ways that you can do this is through just advocacy, talking about it in the Borough Newsletter, or posting flyers and stuff from us in commonplaces, including Borough Buildings or the library. And also bigger projects, converting a portion of Borough property to a native plant meadow, or establishing some tree plantings. And we were reached out to, we have Chris Kubiak, who's our education director, has been working with our Hollow Woods Conservancy, and they had expressed interest in Oakmont becoming a bird town. What that entails, what you actually need to do for this, is just a few small actions. First is having a meeting and discounts. So just kind of chatting through what it means to be a bird town, asking questions, you know, if it's something that you all would like to do. And then it involves creating what we call the Bird Town Committee. And this is just three people, and it does not have to be municipal staff. It can be residents. It can be municipal staff. We definitely encourage that. But it can just be residents, and then the municipality, what we want from the buy-in from them is pass a resolution. So within your old package, you guys should have the sample resolution that we provide. It's more or less just acknowledging that you all are in support of Bird Town PA, that you kind of are willing to have a bird town in Oakmont. Then it's on the committee to keep things going. And the way we measure that is you do get recognition. So after you apply and you become a bird town, we can provide signs that you can post. We have some people like Swiss Veil got very excited, and they posted, created basically every entrance to Swiss Veil as a sign. But the application is, kind of goes through our big five criteria that we judge efforts on. And this is through municipal actions, and this is doing stuff on municipal property, from installing a native plant meadow, to just trying to limit the herbicide usage in certain areas, or allowing, if you guys mow up to the river in some sites, allowing some of it to grow up. Or municipal actions also just include maintaining a shade tree or actions like that. But also, we try to look at what we call the school or youth side of things, because most municipalities don't have influence on the school district itself. But as long as you all kind of support some efforts changing on their side, or just have community days where kids can get involved, get inspired with birds, incorporating that to any Oakmont Borough things. But then we also look for, trying to remember all of them. More or less, we're looking for community engagement. Having more and more folks do our Backyard Habitat Program also kind of counts towards this. And in the application process, it details out each of these. And it's on the committee to put together this application. And you don't have to have done anything necessary. In fact, we want you to look at this as a way to be aspirational. What can you see from this application and think, oh, you know what? We'd be interested in doing this. We'd be interested in partnering with Audubon Society of Western PA to bring programming to the library, to what other community areas we're happy to come out. That kind of stuff counts towards this. And once we receive the application, there is a $100 one-time fee for the application. Beyond that, there is no cost. It's one and done type situation. And then after your first year, we do require an annual report to be filed by the committee. And what that does is just gives you a chance to talk about what you've done. And in each of these categories, we have a spreadsheet that they can fill out throughout the year to say, we did a taming event here, or we did post one of the articles that you all provided in our newsletter on this date. And all this stuff goes into the recognition level. So all bird towns start at green. And then depending on what you've done, you get bronze, silver, gold status. On the BirdTownPA.org website, you can kind of see where everyone lies. And it's not set in stone. This is something that is done every year to try to get people to think about, how can we keep doing so? And if you install a native plant garden, that counts, but you get points for maintaining the native plant. Or if you've done the programming with us and you continue to support the programming. One of the simple things that we can do, and I would say this because I live over on the east side of Penn Hills, we can have monthly walks where one of us, myself, because I'll be so close, can come out to do guided walks with you all, and this is something that we can provide. And that brings me to kind of what our role in this is as Audubon Society of Western PA, is to help you become the best bird town you can. At this point, it's almost a competition. We want to make sure all the bird towns in Southwest PA are at the top tier. So we do provide resources in making sure that you guys have access to what we can. We're actively, constantly seeking out grants where we can give you the money to fund certain projects. When we first started this, we were able to secure some funds to sponsor our first twelve bird towns. And essentially, we were able to give them $1,000 to use towards any project. And we're constantly seeking some of those out. We actually are working on a grant from the Pittsburgh Foundation to bring bird town and some of the other stuff that we offer to twenty communities that were in the former designation of justice farming. And so we are actively working with those communities, but we do this with all of our communities. So we're constantly trying to be the source to help make sure that you guys are getting what you want. But that's kind of the spiel. And I'm happy to take any questions. Yes?
You mentioned the tree plant. Have you had any contact with the Shade Tree Commission?
I believe Chris Kubiak did have some contact with them, and that's something that I'd love to chat with them, too. We are more than happy to, we always just try to steer people into the native tree side of things, try to get them away from at least invasive plants on the shade tree.
I mean, you're, at Shade Tree Commission, certified, what do you call it? Armors. I mean, they're really good.
Awesome. And that in itself, it's just having a shade tree commission. Does Oakmont also, do you guys have an environmental advisory council or? So the Shade Tree Commission in itself is basically points. Every year, just having that is something that we look for. So actually getting recognition isn't too hard, because you guys are already doing some great things. But it's more, what can we do to increase the wildlife habitat? Dark Hollow Woods is here, so partnering with the Conservancy to bring what we can offer to them is a big thing. And being so close to the river, there's so much habitat potential along that as well.
My other question is, beyond the $100 application fee, are you looking for any financial support?
For us? No, no. So our goal is to make sure that, basically, the one-time application fee is the only monetary thing that we see come towards Bird Town. And more or less, that's funding from the signage. We also provide you with a box of some materials and all that. And beyond that, though, our goal is to try to find funds for you all. So we never ask for more financing on that. That being said, if the borough chooses to become a member with us, this also is something that just kind of happens with Bird Town, but we try to give you all discounts for our native plants. So if you guys go to do native plantings and you want to contact us first, we have the Audubon Center for Native Plants in Fox Chapel, where we grow about a hundred different species from hand-collected seeds. So we try to provide you guys with finance.
Since Ms. Friday's here, I assume you're working closely with the Dark Hollow Woods.
I, yeah.
Boy, I presume.
Chris? Yeah.
I presume most of our birds are there.
Yeah, for sure. But it's one of those things where, birds are such a fun talking point. I don't even necessarily consider myself a birder, but it's something that you can appreciate anywhere. Because whether you're walking down the sidewalks here, or the blue jays, watching how aggressive they can be in your backyard, there's always something to do. But Dark Hollow Woods is definitely a nice sanctuary for some of the more unique birds. We'd love to kind of keep promoting them habitat.
So I might add that Chris Kubiak and also add, I forget his last name, the senior director of the Audubon Society, did a walk through Dark Hollow Woods with the directors not too long ago, and they introduced us to the Bird Town program. And that's how the conversation got started.
Yeah, and I think, I've been the coordinator for our Bird Town program as we move forward. And as soon as they said that there was even the slightest amount of interest with Oakmont being a bird town, I jumped at the opportunity, because I think that you all are perfect fit. I think a lot of the stuff is already here. It's just a matter of kind of forming a committee to make sure that things can go.
We also contracted to do a couple of walks in the woods on July 17th, which is a Thursday. I'm getting into my reports, but we're doing a bird walk, a Birds and More Tour. So we have that scheduled, and just to let council know, there's only two seats available, two spots available for the walk. It's going to be a one-hour walk beginning at 9:00 AM.
And those are something that we love to do and bring, so that's something that we do in Freeport. We've worked a lot, what we call the Mon Valley with the key sport and some for sales. And we do, I do a first Friday walk every month out there. We do one in Freeport as well. So having these Birds and More walks are fun. I always kind of lean into the and more side of things. I think birds are great, but it's, I'm constantly looking up and down and all around. If you see a poor mushroom, I'm going to stop.
I just wanted to put a plug in that I'm an Audubon Society member. My daughters have had their birthday parties at Beechwood. Your programming is excellent. We've learned so much from you. I am working on, not certified yet, but working on my backyard native habitat and buying tons of plants and learning all about how you, you know, hand-sown and hand-collected your seeds has been awesome. So I really appreciate the programming that you guys do, and I think this would be a great opportunity for Oakmont, especially as we look to restore Dark Hollow Woods. I think it's, I agree, it's a natural fit. It's something I would definitely be interested, even I'm serving on the committee ongoingly.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm glad that you've been so engaged with us. It's great.
And we'll accept your.
Sure, I figured you would fancy.
That's great. And does anybody else have any questions for Nick? Thank you so much.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. And you've got my contact information. Feel free to share it with anyone else as well. I'm happy to answer questions after the fact, too. But thank you all so much. You all have a great night. I'm going to take this cab.
Will also bring other comments from the public?
When Phyllis mentioned that there were two spots for the bird walk, there are eighteen spots are already filled. So then when the notice went out, it was very impressive how quickly we got a response. And it's going to be our first step at doing community outreach programs and working with the Audubon Society. If you look at our organization chart, they're one of the professional organizations that we chose to partner with. And this is just an example of what the others type of will do to help. Thank you.
That's great. And you're going to give the second walk?
Yes, biodiversity and tree ID. And a tree ID is a map where you can take a picture of the tree, and it'll tell you the species and the relatives for trees. That's going to be in August.
Okay.
August 16th.
Thanks.
Can I talk from here or do you want me to?
We didn't make her come forward, but you know, she got away with it.
Les leaves her a little bit of Canterbury in court. What I want to do is take a few minutes of your time. I think you probably know that we had a serious shortage of school crossing guards this past year. It got to the point that I volunteered to take some of the pressure off that, because I spent actually two months doing it, solid two months, at various locations or intersections. I learned some things that I want to share with you. And it sounds a little phony, but it's the truth of the matter. First and foremost, parents that have elementary students in school, they like us, right? And some motorists don't. Wait a minute. A few motorists don't even see us, even with the yellow vest on. We had, one of our, one of our crossing guards this spring was struck by a vehicle at Third Street and Halton Road. Now, what happened was the vehicle struck her hand, didn't fracture it, but it bruised, okay? On occasion, the motorists will scream obscenities to our, our school crossing guards. And keep in mind that they work in all weather, whether it's snow, sleet, rain, the heat. They don't call off. They're out, they're doing the job. And what I thought about was, when school's in session and there is holidays, they don't get paid, okay? So I said, well, maybe could we give them four paid holidays during the school year? It would cost a whopping $500, okay? And it would cost the school district $500. Now, I went to a school board meeting, and I proposed this to them as well. And I was able to pin down one of the school board members, and I said, don't forget about this. He promised me he wouldn't. So I'm asking you to consider that. It would help with retention and recruiting, because we have a problem with this, and I'm hoping to get out of this sooner than later. And one thing I want you to keep in mind, in the morning and in the afternoon, when they are safely crossing students in these busy intersections, at the risk of their own safety, they're the most valuable employee you have working for you during those two time periods. Thank you. All right.
All right.
I've noticed this same problem in Pennsylvania, especially Pennsylvania. And Moore Boulevard. Yeah. Where we recently had a person, recently, last couple of months, where a person was struck. Yeah. By a motorist. No, at that location. Oh, at that location. Joe Roddick. Oh, right, that's right. The voters. Citizen, yeah. And pretty, pretty seriously injured. And I'm just wondering if moving some police presence down there at the worst times of day might, if not calm it, at least catch some of these people. Because we have a lot of, as you pointed out, a lot of aggressive driving going on at Washington and at Pennsylvania, where people sort of jump the stop sign. They'll, they'll stop, you know, people are stacked up in a row at the stop signs. They may stop because they're in the car, but they presume stop because they stopped once. Their liberty to just speed ahead as soon as they can. Yeah, which is what causes a lot of these dangerous situations.
About two years ago, we had a police officer had his emergency lights on. He was down at that intersection, and he was struck by a pickup truck. So you figure it out. In a uniform, in a vest, with a police guard, with the lights on. He was hit. Not seriously hurt, but he was hit.
Maybe we catch them.
Well, yeah, I think the thing of it is, if you ever get a chance, go down, watch how they work there in Halton Road. It's unbelievable. The other dangerous intersection, very dangerous, is Ninth and, and Halton Road. And I told the chief, if you put me back up there, I want a whistle, and I'm going to take a broom. He said, what are you going to do with the broom? I said, I'm going to swat these cars that stop. So he said, keep the broom in hope. I'll give you a whistle.
You might talk with the chief, and we can put that in writing, what you're suggesting about.
Yeah, I talked to him about it.
Yeah, we can do that right.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, okay. All right. Free to go.
Just one other question. Getting back to the civil service, separate issue. What's the status of a new officer?
I don't know. I retired in January, and I honestly don't know. I've been staying away from, I have been working a little bit with the neighboring community about their civil service issues. I've met several times with them, hoping to get them on board and get them straightened out. But I honestly don't know, John, I've been telling you. Okay?
Thank you.
I have a comment from the public.
What?
I have a comment from the public.
Oh, from the public, okay.
Thank, thank you.
Who are you?
Wait, James Pagnata, 43911 tree. Thank you for applying for the grant, for the rain barrels. I'm, I'm really excited, and I'm hopeful that it will be applied for.
That we'll receive it.
That we'll receive it.
That's all because of your speech, yes. Thank you for your. Yeah, we have to wait a while to get it, but we applied, so.
I can wait a little longer.
Okay, good. Thank you. I also have one question about the guards. I wasn't aware that we don't have enough. Is that, Les was?
Yeah, we're short. Yeah, we're short. Yeah, we're short. Wanted to talk with the chief. And then the high school was mentioning maybe starting a little later. And we told them if that's the case, it's when our proxy park availability between elementary school and the high school.
Because so we both.
Yeah. So I don't know.
They decided not to.
Oh, they decided not to.
Not to change.
Yeah, we were short, yeah.
I just, I hadn't heard of that problem. Okay, any other comments about? Correspondents. There's, I know probably all of you have been asked questions about the money that was related to the USGA. And we had a letter, and Scott had replied to this person that had been requesting information. So he put together the thing in your package, just kind of giving a general response. And I wanted to give that out to the public, too. So just a summary of this is, people asked what the US Open gave to Oakmont, the USGA organization. And they had rented Riverside Park from us for approximately two weeks to park cars. And then they worked with the school separately and put those two areas together for a shuttle that went up and down to the, to the club. And in return for that, they paid us $20,000 for the use of the property. And then they also guaranteed to the borough that within a very short time period, approximately ten days, with a little wiggle room, depending on the weather issues and things, that they would be working and restoring any damage that had been caused to the upper lot, which is where all the cars were parked. And as we all know, the weather was pretty amazing that week. And I was personally very surprised with the shape that the field was in. But there was some, some real work to be done, and they are doing it. And let me see if I had, I think I had a little, some of the details on that. Welcome back to that. The actual second question was, did the USGA give Oakmont any gift or any gratuity for the being in the town? And they did give money. They gave $100,000 to us, the city, to each of these people, the city of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, Plum Borough, and Oakmont. And it's a one-time contribution, and in our case, it is going to be used for the park. And at the moment, it's been earmarked for the lights for the upper field. And if that comes through, that's where it'll be spent. But if that doesn't, then it will be used for something else for the park. And then the city, they were using it for the county and city golf courses to help repair those or provide more teaching experiences and stuff like that. And finally, the, our police worked an enormous amount that week, which probably, it's a piece we talked about, too. And the arrangement with them was, the USGA pays all of the police service time. So the police were on overtime when they were working for them. And then also, our road crew people who worked very diligently and a lot of extra hours also are also paid on the USGA. And this number may be slightly off, because they were still working for month-end figures, but that was $47,000 that the USGA paid to the borough to reimburse us for the costs of all this labor. So that was a, a good thing, and it's something that has been done in the past. It makes for a very, I think the police and the road crew make a big difference in how well this, this whole event goes. So that was the one letter that he wanted to, or information I wanted to pass on. And then the other one that I was just saying is what they're doing for the park. There's been some talk that the repair of the park might not be the school. Some of the school board was getting, getting a lot of questions and complaints and things. And the USGA hired Pittsburgh Hydro CD to come in, take out all of the old grass that has been damaged and replace it and water it and maintain it and make sure that the park is brought back up to the level that it was. And so that is in progress. And the gentleman is the person that Scott and the first chief have been working with throughout this great, great concern. He has been, according to Scott, it's been very good working project, so. He has been, according to Scott, it's been very good working project, so. So that's a lot, but. That's Scott's, that was Scott's speech in a sense. And, uh, that's, you can do the rest then.
So the Chamber of Commerce has requested no road closure for a summer street sale and car cruise. Five six.
Yeah.
From.
It's, it was in your packet. I think it's from nine in the morning till five or so.
It's the day of the event, they're asking for the street to be closed from eight AM to four PM. Uh, close the road and no parking on Allegheny River Boulevard from Pennsylvania Avenue to Washington for the street sale. For the car show, they're asking that the road is closed same time, eight AM, eight AM to four PM from Allegheny River Boulevard between Washington and College for the car show. They need some wooden horses and the day before, they're asking the street department to post no parking signs by Friday, July twenty fifth.
And that one.
The event is from 10 AM to three PM. The Pennsylvania Municipal League, PML, has introduced a new advocacy wing of its organization and seeks interest from elected officials to participate. The letter that is in your packet provides the details of what PML hopes to develop.
And they're looking for us to get a legislative liaison. And if that is interesting to anyone, um, let me know. I was thinking Deb Orne that might, that might interest her.
Since she's not here at the Fenders.
And she's not here at the Fenders. But, um, so, but if anybody that is interested, just let me know and, um, we'll see what we can do about that. If, if people are interested in, this is, um, so that they have someone to contact directly. And so to be somebody on council that's familiar with what's going on, so.
With the car show and the street footers, are there gonna be additional, uh, costs to the parallel for at least, uh, man hours, crew, they, they're being, they get to their, their, to comment on ours later?
I believe because it's on a weekend that it is, it is overtime for the, for the street group.
So yes, there are additional costs associated, but the borough have to listen.
And we have that budgeted in, it's those others, it's the other night markets that are extra in the October month is an extra. That's what we have to look at. The July one is budgeted.
Um, the next item is the minutes. Uh, if you've got a chance to read them, there's one thing that needs to be completed on line sixty-four. I believe there were, was something to be inserted about the exhibits to the public hearing. So we'll check on that. Did, and if anybody else has any questions or any changes to be made to these, either tell me now or, or let, um, Scott know. And we'll readdress this. And one thing in the minutes, I just wanted to remind, um, the public is that, um, at our last meeting on June seventeenth, we, uh, awarded the contract for the construction at work to be done at the sewer plant, uh, to Lone Pine Construction Inc. And the bid is for fourteen million, four hundred sixty-one dollars and seven hundred and ten cents. So it's a huge project and it's supposed to start late this month. We're hoping that they will be, begin mobilizing. Um, they still have, you know, a certain amount of paperwork to get finished to, once it was, uh, awarded. But they're hoping to start within a couple of weeks.
Well, since that, speaking of that, uh, since Ms. Vryde's here, we should point out for the public that this is the culmination, this upgrade to the treatment class, a culmination of over forty years' work by previous councils, most of which took part during Ms. Vryde's tenure as president of council.
There you go. Thank you. So any minutes, if you have any questions or changes for minutes two?
Yeah. I think Patty, you should come along.
Phil, do you wanna do the appointed board?
Sure. So the Boulevard Committee, um, has brought to our attention that the LED lights are not functioning properly. And the project is still under maintenance warranty. LSSE initiated contact with the contractor and brought to the attention that a lot of the lights aren't functioning. So there are actually twelve lights that are defective. I'm sorry, sixteen. And Sean, can you answer when they'll come out to look at them?
So you have news going on here for the value. So a few kind of avenues for valuation here. So we took a look at it. Panel is actually off, right? All the breakers are off. The photo cell is covered up. Um, so it looks like somebody was doing some troubleshooting. I don't know if that was the committee, the Boulevard Committee or open, um, coordinate on that. We've notified Allegheny City Electric, um, contractor as well. So, um, they're to look at it. They did look a couple of weeks ago when the first, uh, concern arose about all being burnt out. Um, if you recall, when the project happened, the borough purchased holes in the fixture, gave it to the contract. So preventing where the issue is there, that may be something with the supplier. Um, I, I guess the big picture, the, 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 I'm sorry, they said, we've, we've got a meeting set up next week. Boulevard Committee, gotta talk through, um, actually all of their projects. I think next on here, we're talking about the railing too, but what they've observed down there. Um, would they look bad? Discuss kind of the, the situation with our contractor with our supplier, um, and work through what best resolution is. Looks like now something's turned them all on. As a, as a service, like all the breakers are on. So that's why you're not seeing it now.
And was my understanding from speaking with the Boulevard Project people that these light bulbs are supposed to last, I think, ten years, more or less. They're LEDs and they have very long life.
About a year and a half.
And now they're burning out in, you know, a tenth of the time that they should be. So, and they're very expensive.
So this is gonna turn into a bigger conversation with supplier, contract, borough, committee, and with your strategy of that.
Okay, but you're making progress on that?
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. Do you wanna talk about the railings while we're there?
Yeah, so, so the railing, um, after a long way is, uh, is ready to start. They sent us a schedule, um, scheduled starting with mobilization this week. Um, the schedule lasts until the end of September, um, so maybe about three months. Um, the schedule that they show, shows continuous work though from now until then. They're gonna start with the four sets of stairs, um, to Delaware and Fort and Virginia. They think about four days or a week per stair set. Um, so that'll take them through July, stairs first. And then they'll move to the, um, to the railings, to the handrail along the plaza area where the block separates. Um, that'll be through August. And their schedule works out until, uh, September thirty. Should see continuous activity there over the next three months here.
That'll make that committee happy.
Yes, yeah, it's good. And that schedule's been shared with the, the committee, so they're aware.
And then we'll do all the rest of yours. The communication committee, we've talked about this some and about getting a committee set up and, and start to work on looking at things as they're coming up and deciding what goes on there and how it's going to work. And, um, the layout, just, just the whole thing to do with that. And we have yet to actually assign, um, people to that committee, I believe. We haven't, I don't think, right, Amanda?
I mean, we haven't put out applications, but the goal was to get some people from the public so we can kind of diversify the skills. Cause one of the things that we're looking for is somebody that has a background in video editing. And then the other more in graphics. And there's probably people out there that could, there's probably teenagers out there that can do it. Um, so just try, again, trying to get more opportunities for people to be able to volunteer. And they wouldn't have access to like actually update the website or to like push something out through constant contact. But they'd be able to create stuff and send it to Scott or I to push out.
Cause I was thinking if we just could start with, um, like you and two other people and make that the beginning and.
We need more people, like we've, we've been beginning for a while.
But you do have other, wait, I'm sorry.
It's Amanda Rocket on I.
Oh, okay, all right. Three of you are working together already. Okay, good. I, I thought we talked about it, but then I, in my notes, I wasn't finding anybody. Wasn't finding that.
But at this point, like, some of the legwork has been under us for a year now. We've been able to really grow our social media presence, like, it's, it's ready for that next step. Um, which looks like creating like content calendars to make sure that we have like minimums that we're posting, um, certain times a month. But then also engaging with other committees and making sure we're pushing out like what are all the, all the different committees doing? And, um, how, how people can stay abreast of information that way. Um, but then also looking at people that aren't connected to us. How do we get the word out and help them get connected if they are, um, interested in getting connected? Cause some, some people, you know, prefer social media and some people don't. So just making sure that like communication doesn't just limit itself to social media. But also looks at the newsletter and looks at using the advanced leader and some other ways to kind of push information out.
And, um, I know I had some questions about it and John had asked some questions. And so I asked John to, um, write his down and just to get us started. Not to work at getting an answer today, but to get the, some of the questions out there and anybody that's others concerned. Why don't you just, you know, review yours and then I'll talk about mine and a little bit and then anybody else's. And then, and then we'll leave it to the committee to, to really sit down and try to figure all this out.
Being the very first steps in my comments, in my opinion. In my opinion, the calendar itself has become very crowded. And I would like to see either some of that activity dropped, concentrated more on the official borough calendar or simply a more prominent, the official borough calendar is on the website. If there were a more prominent link to the official calendar, that would satisfy some of my concerns right there. And the other thing is, again, in my opinion, I think the, I, I like the library, I like the work they do. But they have their own website. And I, I think their use of the borough websites becomes a little abusive. I mean, there's, you know, you go on the calendar, all, almost all are rid, are items, the only items from the library.
So just to clarify, our calendar, this new calendar program, the intention of it from the beginning was for it to be a community-based calendar. So anyone can go on and post an event and it still requires Scott or I to approve it. Um, but the goal was that anybody could post things and that I could find as, as a member of the community, what's going on in my town. Um, there are filters. So if you only want to see borough council or official things, you can just click right on it and say, only show me those things. And then you as a user or a consumer can actually subscribe to that. So you get emailed, like you don't even have to go check it. You can get emailed the events and the information.
I, I think that filter then ought to be a little more prominent or something. Cause when I go to the borough website.
Literally right on top. I can.
When I go to the borough website, I have a calendar, which is official borough items are obscured by all postings there. I, like I say, I would like either more prominent link or, or a more prominent filter or something. So I could immediately go to the website and see what I wanna see, which is the official borough, uh, meeting calendar.
So I'm on a small screen, so it's gonna show a little bit weird on my computer, cause my computer is only eleven inches big. But on normal computers, the sizes would probably be different. And you could actually see the whole word community and it wouldn't be cut off. Plus I have editing access, so it's, mine looks a little bit different. But quite literally, when you go to the Oakmont Borough website, you can search and only search by the borough. Like these are those things, like you can, you can search by different organizations. That, that's what, that's what it is. So, uh, you know, there's filters, they're there for it. Um, the library isn't posting, like the library's posting them on their own website. We just have communication talking to their calendar, so it automatically pulls that information. We're actually hoping the same thing for the school district. We've been working on the backend. But their calendar has been a little bit difficult to merge.
Amanda, if I can just chime in, I mean, it's not really illegal, uh, opinion by any means. But I spoke to Nancy about this issue today, um, and just to somewhat provide an objective third-party review of this. Um, you know, I do see a, a concern where, you know, for instance, to the left of the calendar, you can see the listed events for the day. Um, and it's listed in chronological order. So if you were to go to July fifteenth, for instance, um, the first three things that would pop up would be something, it was like something at twelve o'clock, something at three thirty, and something at six o'clock. So you have to scroll down to see the public notice about the actual hearing. And there's no indication that that's actually, you, you know, it doesn't have like a toggle, um, option next to it where if you're not hovering over it, you might not know to scroll down to see it. So I, you know, just from a sunshine act perspective, you may want to consider having the official current of business, anything that requires legal notice to be, you know, pinned at the top just so that anybody who sees it, they might, you know, you might just go to it if you're not technologically savvy, see the calendar and not realize that council's conducting a hearing or meeting that night. So I, I think it's, might be worth exploring, making that small tweak.
And we can, I, I'm gonna have to ask them about like pinning ours to the top because it does sort by time. But there's two other really great options. One would be to put it under government and then we would have like the official borough council schedule. Um, the other option would be, we have, um, these like most requested resources. And so one of these could actually just be like official borough events. And then you click on that and see that. So those are, those are two like quick and dirty ways that we could have those links be more prominent for people.
But here and on here, if you, I, uh, Phil's just gave it to me. If you push on more filters is where you see the local government information. And, and, well, I, I think it's okay. I mean. So I, I was saying to, um, Jake, that I too sort of struggled to find the R part. Um, the, you know, borough government part. And somehow making that, sort of what John's been saying, you're making that a highlighted part. There's some, I don't know how you do it. Um, when I ask.
Ask if on the official calendar, that's possible on this, the way that they.
Scott thought it was not, Scott thought.
I don't know.
That you couldn't override and make one, it was always chronological. And, but that doesn't mean somebody else may, you know, we can maybe keep looking. And that was, but that's just my opinion and I think so.
So I, I can run a filter on just the Oakmont events. And then I can make a link just to Oakmont, like Oakmont Borough Council events, like what I have open right now.
Like the very first thing on the page and the line would be that.
No, I, I don't think that we could do that, but.
It won't do that?
I don't. I don't, so what I can do is, if you can, I don't know if you can see my view right now, but right now there are, what I've selected is Borough dash and then Council and then Boards and Commissions. So this actually on the backend can create a unique URL, which is like a specific website that only shows that filter, right? So if I took that link and I put it right here and said, you know, only Borough events or whatever we officially call it, then when you click that one, it would show just those specific events related to council meetings, boards, commissions, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I think that's kind of what we're, for you, yeah, and we don't want to try to fix it today, but for you guys to think about how can we, how can you make that more prominent, you know, all these ideas that you have.
You could even title, you know, notice, like public notices or something, just so that, just so that residents, service citizens can just easily see the upcoming schedule of everything that requires to be noticed under the Sunshine Act.
Great. We could do that. That wouldn't be hard to do.
That would be great. And then, and does anybody else have any thoughts, Isaiah or Sophia, do you? We all have thoughts. But that's, so, okay, so, so the three of you are now the committee. And so I think if you can get, put the proposal to us before the next meeting of how many people you wish to have appointed and.
I sent that right.
I was gonna say, I'd be inclined to, at this initial group, rather than just put it out there for people to volunteer, is maybe search through your own knowledge of people in the community that have these skills.
I.
Start with them and then.
Done that. So I emailed a couple of months ago saying what we were thinking for two volunteers and how we had specific skills for those specific volunteers that we would be looking for. I don't personally have somebody that I can think of off the top of my head, but I also have grave concerns about volunteering officially on a committee being connected to who you know in Oakmont. Because I wouldn't be on council had I not just randomly bumped into Sophia and she said, hey, you should be on council. Like, I, I happen to know her, I happen to go to school with her sons, but there could be people out there that have skills and that have opportunities that aren't connected to one of us. That we should be open to the public and, and give that as an opportunity because we don't know what's out there. People are constantly moving into it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not agreeing, disagreeing with that. I'm just wondering if, to get it started, sort of like Dark Hollow Woods.
We are.
It sort of went to the people that were already rep or, you know, all these people that already have some contact with that idea.
Right.
And then, you know, you can always then put it out. If you want to advertise it, that's fine. I just think we just need to get, get it up and running and make sure the things, you know, if you're going to be gone for two weeks, we need to know that, you know, somebody else is.
Yeah.
Who's to do what?
Jennifer and Rocco and I have met a couple of times so far. And then there's other things that we want to do and, and try to like sync schedules and we, we just need more humans. We need more manpower to do the next step. Because, you know, in bigger boroughs, this is a paid position for somebody to do full-time. And I think that's the piece that we're missing here is that like this is, it's a lot more work than people realize on the backend. And so we need some more humans if it's going to continue to be something volunteer and not something that we want to pay someone to do.
Okay, so.
So do we have permission to advertise for the two?
That's what I'm thinking is, is to put a job description together for what, what we're looking for and then put it out on the website.
If, if you're comfortable, do I need like a motion or anything or can we move forward with advertising and then?
I, I don't think so. I think, I mean, I think we can just, yeah, I think just do it. And and then once we gather them together, then we can piece together, you know, who's going to do what going forward and how you want to manage it. But it, it's going to be sort of like Dark Hollow Woods. It's going to be up to you all, the people in the know, to come to us and say, this is how, how we're going to organize. To make sure that all the things that need to be done are going to get done.
Sure.
Is that all right? Okay. Good. Okay, for Dark Hollow Woods Committee, we've already discussed our partnering with the Boards and More.
So let me ask if any council member would like to join us on the Thursday, July 17th at 9:00 AM. We're meeting in the Dark Hollow Woods parking lot around 8:25 AM.
And that's a perfect.
Thursday, yeah, we, out of 20 spots, we have two left.
Okay. All right. So two other public people can do that. Okay. And the Carhouse Board Minutes are in your packets. And the Library Director's Report. And I just want to point out, the library has begun some of its repairs. They painted the woodwork on the outside and they've restained the big original front doors that face Pennsylvania Avenue, which are kind of amazing doors and they burned great meat for this. So I was really glad to see that we were able to get those things started. And I don't think there's anything else in that report that began the action. And and the Carpagey Award Minutes are in your package.
Next, we have the Engineers Report.
Thank you. Project update for this evening. Week. As far as significant updates, we'll start with number three, Cheta Bistro Park, we did exchange contracts, bonds, that kind of thing. They've already sent the Borough Office here to us. We'll set up pre-construction meeting over the next week to here. Other end of the project, lifespan, item four, year 49, that was the ADA ramp here. Show the contractor repaired the slab on some of the concrete where it was cracked. So that contract's complete, closed out, final change order and a request that's been processed. It's listed on the agenda later. Works, I have two. That maybe will get processed by AVN Corp. Item five, railing we talked about, I don't have anything to add, a schedule we talked about earlier. Item six, Dark Hollow Woods Trails. So got the OK bid from AVN Corp. This is project for stormwater improvements behind the fairways. The trail makes that sharp bend above the railroad tie wall. So we got some funding from GDTF, the rest is local funding, still bid through the GTF funding. They've given us a bid date. Memo says July 31st, after we publish, that revised to July 28th. It's still prior to the next one.
Are they going to have to replace that wall with, at that reward?
So we've got, the base bid of the contract is the storm sewer improvements. We've got an alternate in the contract to get a price for the wall. See what the numbers, I think it's going to be more than this budgeted. So this project may, like, just be a stormwater improvement phase. Next couple of updates, nine and 10. These again, similar spot to the ADA ramp project. So the common stormwater project, vegetation's mostly, and then we need a notification for the contract, going to submit a favor request to do final walk over there. Make sure everything looks okay. Similarly, it's the same contractors, we may do it. On Thursday, Thursday, we have a final walk scheduled out here, Fire Department, sidewalk driveway. See if there's any punches, items there to clean up. Hopefully, next meeting we'll have closed out projects there. Stormwater and fire.
On the common stormwater, what's that, the? What group?
It's not, it's not fully scheduled. But just as I was sitting here looking at these, we have one scheduled, the sidewalk. On Thursday at 5:00, it's the same contract. So while he's here, we may go over. Check vegetation there.
First thing morning.
This week, Thursday the 3rd. It's a long, that'd be second. Do you want me to wait or just speak loud?
You want to yell, you can yell, but if you want to wait, it's up to you.
Item 12, so sanitary sewer line. This is our small water sewer grant, expires in the next year. Remember Joe and Scott. Last week. We have a consensus on scope. In July, our deliverables, our goals this month are submitted to the railroad. Railroad crossing, we need a permit from them. And submitted to DEP. We need a permit, actually two permits to cross the stream. Smooth process from Penn Hills Park back in the. Permitting this month, we still hope to be out to bid, hopefully opening bid September. October, sometime this fall, opening bids. Third, Moulton, also in permitting land. We've got our second round of permits back from Penn Dodd. Two different permits here, a single permit to move the, to move the rapid flash beacon into the HOP for the other work. Single permit, so our recent middle today was minor cleanup stop. First round of comments are back for HOP. I'm actually, we've already authorized advertising here. I'm actually thinking we go out to bid now in anticipation of getting the HOP. And if we don't, push it. Most councils okay with that. Scott had your, your formal authorization from us, so you can put this out to try to open bid for the, for the, for the August work session.
We need an HOP before we offer bids.
Well, we'd like to have the permit issued before we open this, but when we get close here and given the time of the year, we've already received one round of comments. We've had a ton of back and forth with the department. There's no surprises for them. They know what the project is. They know what's happening. Comments at this point are going to be cleanup things. So I don't have a lot of angst though. Putting it out on the street, let the contractors see, start to put their bid together. Because of substance, I don't think anything's changed at this point. It's just physically getting. So in fact, the email, the crew's working on it, email me the final bid package. So we're, we're ready to go here. And then that permit, if we have a speed bump, then we'll. I think, I think we go ahead. So that third hole. Next one, item 16, Foligno is going to proceed with, so that'll need to end as well, but they, they are going to proceed with the bid as submitted. Preservation, it is what it is. They understand the circumstance. So in the end, I, I don't think this is a big deal. It's we'll move forward.
Can we get a schedule on that? Because, like, Washington Avenue. You know, from both Upper Boulevard to maybe 10th Street, 8th to 10th Street. It's becoming almost impassable. So either we need a, a schedule that we can tell people about when that will be paid. Or we have to ask, you know, even though it's duplicative, we have to ask the street department to start fixing some of those problems.
Yeah, I would say because of the back and forth here, they still owe a bunch of contracts. I would anticipate we'll have those a week or so. Go ahead and set up pre-construction meeting for a week or two out while we're awaiting those. Then we'll give us their schedule. I forget what's in the, what's in the contract. It's probably a 60 or 90 day, you know, contract duration. Obviously, it doesn't take that long to give that time. So I would anticipate this is probably September paving, is my best guess. We don't control their schedule obviously. I might give you a more definitive answer once we get pre-construction meeting.
The F A is still away, you'd still have, is that just July onwards?
Yeah.
Within probably eight weeks, they would start?
We have to see their schedule. That, without having a pre-construction meeting, that would usually be, like, that's usually kind of the lead time.
So maybe by the next meeting, you might have a, might have a date.
By the time this group meets, even if that is another council meeting, yes, we will have held a pre-construction meeting, we'll kick the project off, we'll have spills in, we'll have, you know, a tentative schedule. So obviously whether, in fact, certainly have a schedule with it.
And when Scott comes back, we can talk about that, like the worst of the problems. If there are some that really are becoming terrible, we could possibly, I don't know if it's too hot to put down cold fixes or, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, if, if street department has stockpile cold patch, you're not, there's not much waste there. You know, I, I wouldn't go through and make it perfect. But the ones that are, that are really bad, you're not really losing much by, by, or shuffle full of cold patch.
We can see it as possible.
Yeah. I think that's. Number 20, Riverside Park Playground, this was the LSA grant. We've got a handful of proposals submitted, a handful of options for playground surfacing, equipment improvements. Those have been shared with the Parks and Rec, they're vetting those, the recommendation from them, and there will be council here for potential award selection of a contractor.
So this, do you think this work will start this fall?
It's possible. If, if we get a recommendation from Parks and Rec in July and council can act on it, then in August. The only thing that may become difficult is poor replacement service. That's, that's very, very weather dependent. Good weather to do that. So it depends the option it takes. As far as lead time playground equipment, it could, you know, the only kind of hedge on half of your service. Yeah.
And do you want to talk about brick repairs a little bit? Do you want to talk about A R B?
Oh, sure, yeah. So we had our latest update a couple of weeks ago, two Wednesdays ago, I think. So from that, our takeaway was to start to put together some sort of schematic plan to identify which segment, you think may fit brick, which segment may fit concrete, and a little bit more defined as it relates to some of these intersections. So first cut of it, certainly not gospel, but something of substance to progress the conversation. So design crew is working on that. And I would imagine at some point, ready to, at some point in July, we want to do another kind of big month get together, ready to talk about that concept plan. Kind of say, we like that blog, we don't like this, start to play the shuffle game. What we talked about too, was narrowing that, that cost estimate to an auction here. Again, it can change, but an auction so we can start to narrow.
Yeah, you talked about having the opportunity then to go down and look at the subsurfaces and
Yes.
and in various sites, because the road's been repaired at different times and different ways.
What salvageable, what's not, and look at that for.
Right.
Rehabilitation, rehabilitation.
Yeah. And then, so that too, we might be able to, at least some of the worst areas, maybe pick our worst area.
Yes.
Or, or most beneficial as an experiment area, or whatever we come up with for this fall with the brick company.
Fix those.
And the discussion that we're having, that we've had, has been this combination of concrete and brick, all in one design. And the concrete holds the brick and the lifespan. Just sort of for the public, the, the reason that the borough, um, the council in these discussions. One of the reasons leaning towards brick and concrete and away from asphalt, um, is the lifespan of the materials. And that they're between sixty and eighty years, I believe, sixty for concrete, eighty for brick.
In that realm, I mean, you've got, you've figured asphalt road. For a road like that, you, you don't wanna deteriorate, you're probably gonna pay twice different levels of tax for it over a twenty year period. Um, you'll probably get at least three, maybe four of those life cycles, with some repair. Nothing's without maintenance, with a concrete.
And some of the brick work that's been put down is in pretty good shape.
Right.
So it's not as if the entire boulevard is in bad shape.
No.
But we can keep a running improvement.
And not from the questioning or hindsight twenty twenty perspective. We've got a lot of good data of what parts we did in as far as what pattern was laid.
Right.
We've got, you know, we've got real empirical field data for this problem, so.
And it's, hopefully will be a very long lasting improvement.
Yes.
And, um, and it will be expensive. So, uh, so it has to last. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to, so when you're ready, you'll tell us and then we'll, we'll set up a meeting.
So, so I know Scott's out this week. He and I just actually have a, every other week, just kind of project status meeting. Um, we'll give him an update the next time we meet, I think that's next Wednesday. If we're close, then, um. So if you guys, I'll have to facilitate with council what I worked in, second week last month, see if we can, we'll come together.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for Sean?
Yeah, on the grant awards. The, uh, one, one thing I always harp on, harp on just again, this large H two O grant. We need to light a fire on the hatch to get that money spent. Not necessarily, it won't be spent on an E Q tank or a centrifuge. So they have to find a way to spend that money, spend it very soon. Okay, this, you know, there's this use and lose. There's a real danger in all this, all the grant funding, that it could be clawed back. If you see my latest report in the C O G, it's, I understand that. The other thing, referring back to my C O G, latest C O G report, the Riverside Park eighty eight rail, I believe the C O G has approved. You know, they'll never get ten on that.
Um, I'll follow up with Rob. We haven't received that notification. Um, it, it may be the case, like, like we talked before the meeting, actually, that one is designed, so they don't show. That was the other piece of the trails.
Right.
That connects what we're doing, the road program, so. Yes, as soon as they give us the okay, those are advertised, and they, we just need to ship stuff over.
And the other thing we could talk about are always the bike, the bike racks, so it looks like you're making progress on that, that bike racks are gonna.
Yes.
Um, and on the boulevard sometime fairly soon.
Yeah, actually Scott has taken the wheel and knows how to put the detail together. I understand that those are.
Okay, good. Okay.
Well, that's what we'll move on to the other part of the list, if there are any.
Just, just two brief updates, um. Council on our community planning tonight, there were two recommendations made by the planning commission. Um, one of which is a conditional use and the other is a lot wire vision slash subdivision. Um, with respect to the conditional use approval, we can touch on it more under community planning. Um, it does require a, a hearing, um, under the M P C. I'm working with those, it's a really tight turnaround. The planning commission just recommended approval last Thursday. We're going to try to get it on, um, advertised on the agenda for two weeks from now. It might have to just wait for the July either workshop meeting or regular meeting if the, they're on, if the trip's not able to squeeze us in. Uh, the only other update last Thursday was the zoning hearing board on the substantive validity challenge to ordinance number oh one dash twenty twenty five, which is the parking ordinance. Uh, we can discuss it more in executive session, but, um, the parties agreed there were no, um, questions of, of fact, it was just questions of law. So both sides agreed that we are going to submit proposed findings affecting conclusions law to the zoning hearing board for their consideration. So, um, the applicant has, has twenty days from last Tuesday to submit theirs. And the borough has twenty days, the applicant then has seven days, um, to issue a rebuttal, um, to ours. And then the plan, excuse me, the seven hearing board has forty five days, um, to issue a written decision. So that's the timeline going forward, and again, we can discuss that more in executive session.
There won't be another hearing, it'll just all be paper.
Yes, there should not be another hearing at this point, so. And that is the extent of my report at this time. I, I really didn't agree when I'm working on it, so.
I was just letting you know. Sort of busy couple of weeks.
We can see you getting ready now.
Okay. Uh, next we have the assistant borough manager's report for Tuesday. Uh, let's get into the, the council representative, my apologies.
No problem, um, I just have a couple of things I guess. I reached out to Phil's about the mural that high schools are painting. They're pretty much closing in on these lines. I know what, the last one, they had internship or something, so they're just a little busy, but that should be done very soon. The library reached out to me and is asking, they're looking to design a new space, I think, in the library. And they just asked me to reach, do some outreach to students, especially teenagers around the community, about what they would like. So I'm probably just gonna send out a survey. If there's any.
Anything like, different things that the library can offer?
Yeah, it's like some new space they're building, so I think it's just like, is there anything, any feedback you could give?
Yeah.
So, just something like that. And then, um, currently I'm working with a student from a high school too, we're trying to have food drives maybe the next month or two. I reached out to Phil's about that too, so hopefully in the next week or two, we kinda have some quite finalized tools that.
So the art students, they are, we're gathering them to paint the storage container that's down on N Street. And we came up with some beautiful work during that is remiss and, uh, things to note. So we'll get the storage unit painted soon in this summer.
Yeah, so I think like two designs are complete, because it's four sides of containers, so four designs. Two are finished and then the two outstanding ones, I think, they're very complete, so hopefully.
You know, the designs are complete, but they haven't.
They have painted, this is the, yeah, the final design.
And are they afforded to people?
Two students.
Two.
Let's see.
Yes. So now. So, back on the table back there, there's some information for the recycle event. Some kind of way without advertising, you got forty eight people to sign up. So they added additional spots. There's a fee to recycle different items, but you could bring things like television monitors, um, fluorescent lights, paint, cleaning products. Air conditioning units, they do not accept tires. So you can scan a Q R code to make an appointment, or there's a link on our website that will get you to the appointment setting. Um, if we fill up the additional forty eight spaces, then they'll, they'll be able to add an additional forty eight. So we'll be up to about a hundred fifty participants.
And, and how many do we have at this point?
Forty eight, I already have.
Okay.
Without even advertising. I put it on social media today, on our Facebook page and also our LinkedIn account. So I'm expecting more people to reach out to fill up the spots. Yeah, that is going to be held on Wednesday, July thirtieth, from nine A M to one P M. It's going to take place at the Second Street parking lot, and they have it set up. So you drive in, open up your trunk, the workers take everything out of the trunk, put it in the bin, and you drive away, you pay, and then drive away. The event is no cost to the borough. Nine, nine A M until one P M.
Is there a, a price list?
And you. There is.
Does it have a cost? Oh, okay. I know the first time I went, I had no idea.
Yeah, there's a price.
Pay, pay, and it's like, oh my. Yeah, okay, good, so it is in. Thanks.
Then I am working with Paintland at the library and also Connect to have Oakmont host the Connect meeting for July. The date of that meeting is July twenty fourth at ten A M to twelve noon. The agenda is going to include a Churchill Borough Council member, and he's going to discuss the future of fire. And also accidents and incidents that require emergency management coordination. So I'm going to meet with Isaiah later on this week, sometime soon, to see if, um, we can also get Isaiah on the agenda. Or someone from the fire department also, but. Because we're hosted, and I think it would be a good thing if we were actually participating on the agenda. They connect this, also go in to set up a resort, research council, and overall theme is emergency management and safety. So because they're having it at the library, they thought it would be a good time to kick off this, uh, research council. And get some insight from emergency management coordinators. And break up information and case studies that you may already have data on. And they're going to share more information with me, but in attendance will be mayors, council members, um, municipal managers from Connect. Member of municipalities. And finally, the Dark Hollow Woods Committee met with Roxanne Swan, who is the plant center coordinator for the Autobots Society of Western Pennsylvania. Uh, we met with Jennifer Sneller, who's the landscape architect with L S S E, along with Sean and the Dark Hollow Woods Committee. What we talked about was the pollinator garden. We got the, uh, grant already deposited into our account, which is one hundred thousand dollars. And what we were meeting to determine is the area where we're going to install the twenty thousand square foot pollinator garden. In the grant, it's, it specifies that we are going to, um, have to get benches installed. One of the resources for us to get wood is a company called Land Horse, they repurpose wood. We actually can get wood from fallen trees that are indoor colorwoods, get them to mill it and give it back to us, so we can provide benches. That's just one, um, suggestion. Yeah, uh, we can also do that one to, can you like come into town and, um, remove the trees? We can get them to repurpose the wood. They could either keep it, resell it, or give it back to us. They can make wood chips for us. Anything they need. Uh, we're looking, um, to install a pollinator garden, so that deer are not able to browse on it. And there's also A D A requirements that we talked through. There's different ways that we can promote, um, A D A accessibility for a pollinator garden. We also talked about the area in the meadow in Dark Hollow Woods is prone to flooding. So between the landscape architect and Autobots Society, they found plants that are flood resistant. So we can place those plants in the area, and they will not be as prone to flooding as some of the more delicate plants. The overall goal for the pollinator garden is stormwater infiltration. Some of the, um, stormwater is running at such a velocity that it's flooding out lower lying areas. This pollinator garden can help remediate some of the stormwater that's running out in Dark Hollow Woods. And. Does anyone have any questions on anything in my report?
You're applying for a grant for a drone for the, for the fire department.
Well, I wrote a letter of support for the fire department to apply for a drone. Um, Isaiah will probably tell you more about it, but from what I've seen, it has thermal capacities, infrared cameras.
Yeah, so, um, the use of drone would be for search and rescue, um, search and rescue, um, the better size of, um, drone. We're hoping to get the whole, so be able to, for, uh, for rescue calls, we'd be able to, uh, from our station. Be able to, uh, identify and locate, uh, any victims of the, also, uh, property situation device.
Weren't you testing the drone last week?
Yeah, um, just a little bit, someone who, that we knew, much required having, uh, brought a list of them. Um, this is enhanced on the, it's probably also, um, there's a vehicle that had the M Y C, essentially a fire, fire prevention. We also got, um, some additional information. Practical. There.
You have your body.
Is the drone gonna fly pretty far?
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Good. Also kind of neat, um, I was at Ace Hardware, and right now, when you buy something from Ace Hardware at the, like, when you, you know, and they're always like, do you wanna donate a dollar to blah blah blah? But it's usually like something you don't know. Right now, it's the fire department.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, I, I saw that. I thought that was great.
Yeah.
And. The code enforcement report is in your packet. He's proactively driving around looking for violations. Um, most of the violations reported this week is for numbers on homes that are not large enough. For the numbers that, uh, for the homes, they have to be at least four inches tall and preferably reflective. This is for emergency situations. If ninety one is called to your home, they need to be able to readily identify where you live. But we've noticed that a lot of the numbers on homes are a little too small.
Is that a rural regulation?
International property maintenance, good.
So, we, or, so is.
Yes.
So we just notify first.
Notify them, it's, um, it just has to get bigger numbers.
And then like every.
Usually start with a notice violation before you issue a citation.
Uh, yeah, they're not getting cited. They have time to fix the problem. If they don't fix it for a certain period of time, I believe it is two weeks. Then they'll get another notice of violation, they can appeal it, and then it'll take more time, it'll take thirty days for them to appeal. Then eventually it'll get cited and go to the magistrate.
Wonder, New London Lane.
They got his art there.
Yeah, I wonder if they should just tell everybody who lives in the neighborhood if they all have the same numbers, you know.
I suspect those numbers were. Put up by the original.
By the development.
Original developer.
That's what I did.
If they're smaller than one, they're probably smaller. If they're smaller than one, they're probably smaller than all.
Yeah, I mean, maybe.
I'm just wondering whether or not that was incorporated. I mean, all that was, all that development was accepted by the borough at one time, conforming or not. There's a lot of non-informants there. And I'm just wondering whether this is really, that you're not hitting the hole too hard, whether or not they're legitimately, whether that, you know, as existing was legitimately accepted by the borough at some point in the past.
But what I was wondering was maybe just tell the HSA. Let them know and then you just tell everybody in the community why these are coming and might be easier.
Or less. Or have a pass to keep. Or have a pass to keep.
But sort of a lot, well, maybe they would. But if it's for safety, I think there's a, there's a reason it's bigger.
I agree. Contact the H O A first rather than citing all these individuals.
And now for the street.
And that's in, it's in your, in your packets. If, if there's questions, it's really for Scott when he comes back. I think it's pretty simple. And then the Deb's project with the deer survey. So I thought I'll call Deb. She hasn't been able to come. And we can try and work through these questions that she had. And if you've had any changes or suggestions to that form that she circulated earlier, just let me know. There will, you know, make sure everybody sees what, before it gets disseminated. But I would think that if we put it out on, Amanda would put it out and then we have it at the street sale. And just, you know, I'm not sure. I can't see us mailing it to everybody in the community, but you know, we can see about putting it in the Oakmont newsletter, which does go there very also. So we can see, we'll find out costs on that and then decide what makes sense.
Or, or in the it's a pretty long survey. You put it in the newsletter. You can put in the newsletter. And I'm just gonna leave it and link this on.
Or in or just a piece of paper, you know, they put in a supplier. We can, we can see. I don't know how much that costs, but. I'll talk to Deb. I'll, I'll, I'll do that.
I, I just wanted to add that I had multiple people text me after hearing the news that we're going to do a deer survey. They were so eager to weigh in on their feelings about deer that they texted me photos of how many deer they see and their feelings about the deer. So people, it seems like are rearing to go to give survey feedback. So I think it's a
You're right.
A good, let, pass it on to Deb that it is being well received already.
You can be the second point person. She's, she's got him. Yep, yeah. I had one that tried to move in into the backyard. I left the gate open. Came out and there's a baby and mommy in my backyard. No, no, no. So, yeah, they're everywhere. Good. Okay. So I'll talk to Deb and then we'll get that circulated. Okay.
Then we have the manager's report. It's basically self-explanatory. If anyone has any questions when Scott returns, you can ask him, but nothing sticks out in his report. Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, I can take the first two bullet points under community planning. So as I alluded to during my solicitor report, the planning commission convened last Thursday on two separate applications. The first of which is for conditional use. The Holy Family Parish wants to operate a daycare in the existing elementary school. That is permitted in the R3 district as a conditional use. There are provisions in the zoning ordinance, Section 205-426, which lists the criteria that they'll have to prove. Basically, it has to be a licensed facility. All points of ingress egress have to be designed to allow for safe drop off and picking up kids. You have to have an outdoor play area that's fenced with a fence at least four feet in height. There needs to be exterior open space. It has to be screened if it abuts a residential property. And then it has to have off-street parking. As I further alluded to, it's a quick turnaround. We're trying to get it advertised. So Borough Council has 60 days from the date that a conditional use application is submitted to conduct a hearing and render a decision. So I'm working with Philis to see the date of the application. The date of the application, one that's included in your packet does not have a date. So as long as it was submitted after June 4th, which I believe it was, it will either be able, if we can't get it advertised for two weeks from now, like I said, we can have it out of public hearing at the July workshop or regular meeting. And then the second item.
Is they're hoping to open?
They're hoping to open quickly. It's just, this is a strange month where the fourth Thursday fell last Thursday and now the first Tuesday is there. So, but then the other recommendation by the planning commission was for River's Edge. And it's kind of twofold. So the first one is they have three undeveloped lots. And on each side, they have three townhouses. So they, what they want to do is they want to take three lots and consolidate them into two and build two standalone homes on them. They just feel it's more marketable and just more aesthetically pleasing rather than building another three townhome unit there. The other is to change the property line. So the space between the clubhouse for the single family community and the pool and the condo complex that's right next to it. There's a little stretch of land that wraps around the exterior of those apartments. It actually belongs to the, the community of single family homes. Doesn't really make sense because it's really, I mean, if you look at it, you would assume that it's, it belongs to the apartments.
I think it's the apartments were not in the very original design.
Okay, is that?
I think that's why.
So they, they basically, they said, really, you know, ownership of that lot should be with the apartments so that they can be the ones to control, you know, oversee and get it upkeep. So they submitted a subdivision application, which was reviewed by LSSC. LSSC found some issues both with respect to zoning and land development. The applicant did not feel that it was going to be an issue to address those. So the planning commission recommended approval subject to compliance with LSSC's review letter. Sean, have you spoken to the applicant yet?
I got an email from them asking instead of time to answer a few questions.
So I, I think for that one, if, you know, if you really did that squared away with them prior to the regular meeting in two weeks, we can handle that. Otherwise, again, we can just have that approved in July.
Just at the regular meeting.
At the regular meeting.
And I, I talked to Mr. Mankoff, concern.
No, I, Sean, I have more to add.
So I, I did respond to you the day for next Tuesday, waiting for response. So I, I think we'll end up talking early in the week. The provisions aren't of great significance, so I don't see why they could recite it before council meetings.
It's somewhat of a different issue, but. Where do we stand? They, they wanted some changes to the the properties, you know, along that wall are above the floodplain. The FEMA map.
Yeah, we, CJ, Scott and I made a coordinated meeting with them. They can provide some additional information on elevation.
So those properties, at least on paper, are above the floodplain.
And they all have to buy special insurance. I mean, I think that's their, isn't that their?
Well, two steps. One, if they're above, we believe it could be applied. Borough can issue them for retro-lact permit that resolves FEMA's concern for them not having to have flood insurance. The next step, building, they have the map changed. They can deal with that. That's an issue on the side.
And then is there FEMA issues with the creek too? With Plum Creek in the, or is that totally?
Yeah, well, those are issues with the conservation district. But their permit there starts to separate from FEMA floodplains. Again, developer issues.
I, I just, I just had talked to Mr. Mankoff, who's a developer that most. And I don't know. I mean, I'm sure everybody's really familiar with River's Edge. You know, it's a lot of houses. But they are at the point now that they have five buildings that are still under construction but have been sold. So they're already purchased and, and been being built. And then they have five under construction that are for sale. So they have five available. And then two that are the ones that they awarded the different property lines. Instead of building three, they can build two. So they have two that have not yet begun. And that's it. Once those are gone, this entire development is done. And then the other thing that they talked about was the new apartment buildings are going to also be available as condominiums for sale. So some of it may be rental, some of it may end up being sold. But they're finding that there's people that want to buy. But, and he, they bought the property in 2011. So this has been 20 years in the hard 20 years for the construction people to, you know, they had to wait a long time to get started. But it's, it's just about done. The warrant list, as you, please note that this report on the budget report is only through June 26th because of the month then being now. So it's going to be, the June 30th report will be available before the next meeting. And I thought at our next meeting, either at the voting meeting or at the following work session, we'll have a mid-year review of the budget. See where we stand, what's over, what's under, and any concerns that we have. But some of the numbers that are in there, you know, have not, do not necessarily have what happened in the last three quarters. Isaiah, are you, no, please, probably, the grant tag? Well, I see they put in for three above brown tanks. So I guess that's what Scott's referring to that's in our packet.
Yeah, so at least the, at least we were notified of it at least.
And he was listed all hazardous materials exploring the tanks. Are any of those considered particularly hazardous? And also. Yeah, I, I mean, so. But the other question is, how are those materials transported to their tank? Are they coming by tanker truck or by train? Who, who is notified of those of that chance?
Well, I think it's more a security concern, sending out those notifications necessarily to, you know, need to know basis.
And that's what I'm asking you. Who, who gets those notes? This is fire department or the police or what?
Yeah, I mean, it's more like a security concern, really, is because, you know, we don't really need to know exactly how they're transporting their materials. So I think they don't, the train, you know.
I don't think they put out a notice, what's getting delivered, what's going on.
I'm saying a public, somebody in the borough, you know, police or fire department ought to know if their tank car is coming through town with hazardous materials or their big trucker is coming across the bridge with hazardous materials.
Maybe I'll sit chief if that's part of, and if that bait. If that's something that we're even entitled to know. I don't know.
There might not be a requirement to share that information.
Yeah, depending on the hour.
I know there's all these.
Agglutulation, right.
I said, the actual movement of those chemicals, especially by rails, are completely fire regulated, supervised. So that's who actually oversees and investigates that. In addition to that, I think moving on train rails, the railroads of the railroad is the worst. But we are not notified by knowledge.
Because it could be every day. I mean, going somewhere past us, through us. We just know that they are bringing this stuff into the borough as much as we know. We don't know their dates or what. My regulations from a long time ago was maybe six, eight years ago. That they had a whole review with Brent Tag. You know, they make sure that they have keys to everything to get access to the areas in the building in case of emergency. And then fire department, police somewhere in the, your world knows, you know, where all sprayers and all the things, all the safety items that are in their building. They have a map of the buildings and the fire department and/or the police. And, and this is a while back, so I can't remember all the specifics. But I remember listening to them go through how they had, how they documented everything because it is per se, you need to know. And they, we kind of did it for the whole borough to make sure that the police had access to the apartment buildings, things that have an outside lock into a general communal living of some sort. They had, they got all those lined up. So there has been in the past and probably an ongoing safety thing with all of this.
Yeah, we do know a range of, you know, what chemicals are. We know what chemicals are there and add a, you know, a larger level, you know, range of, you know, almost typically stored there. But the unit are breaking it down, shutting it out.
That's simplistic, provided.
Share with Joe, our questions. Okay, well, we can have a visitor. Yeah, yeah.
My name's Matthew. I'm a police officer with Oakmont. Drilling back a few weeks. I was, I've been a police officer for the last 12 years. I did work at Oakmont previously from 2014 to 2017. I definitely retired because it's on West Deer Town, which is a neighbor area. And they've recently changed the policy about taking second jobs on back in Oakmont for some extra hours. And it's nice being back in the small walk-in town where everyone waves to each other. Yeah, it's a little more rural where I work now.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So we're hoping they're coming soon. And the ADA project. Did we talk about?
Yes.
And they are being constructed. Wasn't that nice? We got to do this page every quarter to do that more often. Anyway, and so any future agenda topics, you know, you can talk about or you can tell me right now, right now?
The date in fine for Sunday.
It is the Wednesday before the next meeting. It is the Wednesday before the next meeting at noon. So, well, no, yeah.
It's the Thursday before the next meetings. That we have on our calendar.
Thursday at 2:30 to July 10.
Last time was just Wednesday at noon.
Had we put it on a.
It can be.
He had me put it on a calendar, so.
We need to get it on the calendar.
It is, so I shared everybody with an event on a calendar that says packet materials are due to Scott 12:00 PM, July 10th. So it, it should send to everyone, the only two people that accepted it were Deb and Jamie, everybody else did not. But, oh, and Rocco.
So what was, what day was it, man?
It's Thursdays preceding a meeting by noon.
Okay, Thursday at noon.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't think we have any comments from the public. And I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those are fixed. Okay, thanks.